It's a pleasure to be here this evening. They introduced myself, my name is Zach and I'm from the county of Utah. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I am a licensed professional civil engineer in the state of Utah. People ask me what civil engineer does. It's pretty much an engineer that likes to clean desert outside with bridges and dams and pipes and roads and things like that. Also, the other unique situation I'm in, as I like to put it, is that I'm also a licensed patent attorney. And so patent attorneys, hopefully most of you know what that is, is if you have a really cool invention and you want to make a lot of money off that invention, I will help protect that idea. And so I practice it as a patent attorney also here in the state of Utah. As a civil engineer, I'm actually no longer in a small engineering company here located in St. George, which has some other offices. But I had to deal with the government my entire career and I had to interact at all levels of the government. The federal, the state, the local, and even the county. And one of the reasons why I ran is because sometimes I get very frustrated with certain things. And my wife said, my mom told me, she said, "Zach, either you need to shut up or do something about it." And I said, "You know what? I'm going to do something about it." And so when I looked around, I decided that as a county commissioner, that would be the best position for me to do a lot of things. And to use my training and my counsel I have to help this county out. I have three young children between the ages of 12 and 7. And I want to make sure that they, when they grow up, they have a beautiful place to live and a fun job to do in the county. That's my goal. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Victor Iverson. I'm a candidate for county commissioner and also finishing the last six months of Danny Drake's term. You know, now I hope to say that this race isn't necessarily about me, it's not even about us, it's up here on this page. It's about all of us here in this county. It's about my idea of Washington County as a good and unique place, a place where we respect our heritage, where we welcome new people into our community. And I want you to know that the reason I run for county commissioner is not for what I'm against, but what I'm for. And what I'm for is a Washington County that is prosperous, a Washington County that has a vibrant economic development to provide a future for my children, your children as well, as well as the people that live here. What I'm for is to bring you, our citizens, to access their public lands and use them in the same respectful and responsible way that we have the generations, without an approach with a tyranny of the eastern bureaucrats. What I'm for is Washington County developing its water right and bringing that water here to promote generational prosperity that happens. What I'm for is a continuation of what we call the Washington County model, or some call it the Dixie spirit. It's this idea that here in Washington County, we do things differently. Electoral officials at the city and county level work together to solve problems and we've done that. This is a rugged country that from the beginning was as hard as individualism. And anyway, these are the things that I'm for. My wife and I are both members of our families, have been here for five generations, and our children represent the sixth. It is very important that they have a future here. We all drink a lot of the wells, we did dig, and we all sit in the shade of trees, we did plant. And the fact of the experience is that it's one thing to inherit a legacy, it's another thing to build. And my thoughts is to continue to be a pioneer here and build prosperity for my children. And I would appreciate the help very much in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It's great to see so many faces out there. And thank the SU for the use of this facility and the Spectrum for sponsoring. Yes, I think it's important. I'm glad that you're here to answer your questions. I hope that we all can do that to your satisfaction. I'm Paul Landan. I'm a transplant from Salt Lake City. I bought property down here in 1976 because I thought this was such an amazing place. And I've been coming here regularly ever since then. I was born here, educated in Salt Lake. I went to law school, became a prosecutor for seven years in the county attorney's office, going from juvenile court up to taking head of the whole prosecutorial division. And then ran for the office of the Salt Lake County District Attorney. That was a period when the combined county attorney and district attorney into one office. And it was a terrific experience. I've been in private practice for a good part of my time, so I have a wide range of experiences with people and different subjects. In the county attorney's office, we took over, we were the advisors to the county commission. And so I've been to hundreds and hundreds of county commission meetings. I had properly confronted and reprimanded by county commission and county manager. And so I feel like I'm prepared. Ten years from that time, I ran and was elected to the office of Attorney General. I served there for four years. It was quite an eventful time. And then after that one, in private practice, and retired. I'm now semi-retired. Not as much fun, I have to admit. But I have to say that this is an important thing, serving in the arena, my opponent, that it's important that we get this right. This county is on the cusp of great changes. And if we don't do it right, we're going to all regret it and so will our children and grandchildren.
Okay, our first question, Mr. Iverson did this first and then Mr. Landan will go ahead and answer. Growth is a concern on many levels. Economic growth is in many ways tied to population growth. Yet population projections concern people who don't want this, who don't want this to become a swirling metropolis. With many candidates using phrases such as "smart growth," many residents are left with little information about what that really means. So please share, what is your definition of smart growth?
Well, you know, it's interesting, when the pioneers came here, just right outside here, it was the first camp. And they stayed in those tents and those flaggings until they laid out the city. And once they planted the city, then they moved in. And that's the way that the Washington counties should, that we need to learn from them, we need to continue to plan. A lot of times when we talk about growth, we need to appreciate that this is a function of the cities as they plan, density levels, and discuss it. The county is really responsible for the outlined areas that are not incorporated within cities. But, you know, this is going to need to be a continued discussion that we have as a public, in the city, to decide what kind of community we want. This town has obviously changed in my lifetime. But in many ways, it's changed for the benefit. And if my children are here, I want them to appreciate Southern Utah. For example, I live in the burgh, I live on six acres, it's a small hockey park. That's a density level that I can appreciate. And so what we need to do is, you know, Vision Dixie was a project that came about. Vision Dixie is really just plan regionally and implement locally. And so when we talk about growth, the decisions on growth are going to be made at our city level. And as the county commissioner, I'm going to be there helping in any way I can. But we have to balance property rights, we have to balance a lot of things. We can't just dictate to people what a community looks like. And just, we cannot use water as a government, grow that water. I must tell you, water development and growth are two separate issues that must be separated if we're going to have an honest dialogue about what kind of community we have. Lack of growth introduces human suffering to this place. We must grow smart and prosper swiftly.
I came from a place to practice dumb growth. And dumb growth was just laying one series of homes and neighborhoods out after another, after another, after another, fulfilling every space that you've got. It's unfortunate. I've seen it in Nevada, in Las Vegas, I've seen it in Phoenix and the surrounding area, where we now have 780 people. And I've seen it in Southern California, where all you've got are homes, cones, homes stacked on top of each other. This county, some years ago, 2006, 2007, spent $500,000 in a year and a half and asked many of you, I'm sure, to come in and sit down and talk about what you would like to have happen in this county. And they did, and read Vision Dixie. And it's a pleasure to see that, and it's really a pleasure to read, because to have something created by the citizenry that so tracks what smart growth really is, is quite amazing. And as my poet said, we plan regionally, locally, and bi-regionally. But basically, they said, "Take our towns and define them, and then build them in, grow up, not out. Make it for good transportation between all these towns, preserve our business." And as you know, women are a really unusual place here. I mean, in many of the towns I've already mentioned, you can just lay out a burn it, and you can have new competitive roads. Here, we've got every kind of impediment that man had already been. From anthillines and bluffs to arroyos and everything else. And it isn't going to work that way here. So we have got to take the visions of, or the principles of Vision Dixie and get serious about them. We've got to recruit all the towns and get them to sign on to do this. And then really improve those issues about public transportation and grow where we can have walkable communities.
This is an issue, as a civil engineer, I personally felt quite good. And interestingly, as Vision Dixie was an excellent document. And it was funny, it's how few people have actually read it. And I can say that I've read the entire thing, I actually was a part of the process of getting input. But both candidates are both correct that as county commissioners, it really is left up to the cities to handle that. We can encourage them, we can even beg them, and believe that there's nothing we can do. If they want to have a diverse planning world, that's what we have to do. So as a county commissioner, what can we do? Well, there's a couple of things we can do. First of all, I think the cities should work together. I can tell you, as an engineer, I can design the most ugly project in the whole entire world. I can, you know, they'll say, "Bolosir was here." And I can, I can know that. Or I can design a project, I would look to make it blend into the environment, into the things with housing, the height of the housing, and so many things that you can do to make it so when you drive by, it's hardly even see that the house is there. And make you blend those things in. So as a county commissioner, the thing that I want to do is encourage the cities to continue to work together and make sure we have all that. And the transportation issue is a huge issue in this county. Some exceptions will happen here shortly. We're going to have a big lot, like you do in Los Angeles. And I understand that, because I've actually performed on stage myself, and I see what's coming down the road. And if we don't deal with these issues now, then our children are going to be paying millions upon millions of dollars to fix our lack of planning. And that's something that I'm very adamant about, is transportation and dealing with those issues.
You'll notice that being one of these first few questions, it'll have something to do with growth, it'll somehow shape our harms. So this next one will start with Mr. Landan, who's four away on the table. We mentioned Vision Dixie in the last answers, most of you didn't. Of which Vision Dixie principles do you believe the county has held to well over the years? And which do you think require a stronger commitment?
You know, that's a question that's hard to answer. But I can't see where Vision Dixie has been applied. I'm trying to think of one particular. Broad range of housing, growth inwards, growth upwards, walkable communities. We've got a little bit of that, but a very little bit of that. Guarding our signature landscapes, we've guarded them, we've done it accident, because no development has happened there. I mean, some one of the signature landscapes is right out there, a bunch of houses on top. And the same thing with the beautiful bluff together in the town. I can remember years ago, when I enrolled in town, and I saw that big scar that I did there, I just about faded. I would still like to get my hands on the guy, but there you go. When we look at a broad range of housing, one of the things we really need here is some housing for the people that don't have money. We've got a lot of people with a fair amount of money needing some beautiful subdivisions and some expensive housing, but not very much of what you would call affordable housing for people who don't have that kind of money. We've got some of the underserved industrial areas, and I would say maybe that is one of the areas where Vision, principles of Vision Dixie have been at fault. We've got a couple of well-organized industrial areas that are way from town. And that is the place that I think principles have applied. I think, other than that, I can't really, I can't really say that Vision Dixie has happened in our community. Well, one thing I would surely like to do is to be able to play a part in making sure that it does happen by talking with other towns, by talking with their mayors, their elected officials, their councilmen, and telling them about this plan and seeing if we can't let them decide on Vision Dixie.
Should I talk about it? Yeah, I'll mention the issue, just move closer to your mouth when you're talking. Well, Vision Dixie is more of an art than it is a science. It has a broad range of goals, and in a lot of ways, the communities have implemented some of it, so many principles. I think we need to come back to one of my points that I said that I'm for, which is a continuation of the Dixie spirit or the Washington County way, where we discuss things, where we bring it to each other's attention. I was in a meeting with the mayors the other day, and the mayor of one of our communities said, "You know, we've talked about Vision Dixie, but boy, it's hard to implement when you go to a property owner and start saying, 'Hey, we're going to use this to restrict your plans on your property.'" But I think we can get through that, I think we can get through that by having discussions in our cities. And I am in the opinion of Danny Drake, Danny Drake's position. He was given an assignment from the county commission to kind of continue to head up this project, Vision Dixie. Having a discussion with several of the council members from one of our communities, and he asked me, he says, "Hey, can we get off of this?" So as a county commissioner, I want to tell you that I will continue to support the ongoing discussion with our communities about how vision Dixie. But I want to tell you that I don't think that we've done a horrible job this week. I think we've done a pretty good job, and I want to continue, I want to stay positive about the idea that, oh, sure, there's mistakes, but but this town, a lot of you have moved here because you love this town. I love this town, I've stayed here. And so what we're going to do is we're going to continue to implement good, smart policies in this town. And one of the things that I'm passionate about is doing everything we can to conserve agriculture, to achieve the degree that we can. And I just have patience. We will work hard and we will make it work in this town, just like we have in the great city.
It's kind of nice having your own mic. So one thing that with Vision Dixie, I think the best thing the county did was actually create Vision Dixie. The county was a major player in getting that introduced and giving it out. The thing that most people don't realize about Vision Dixie is that Vision Dixie actually anticipated large amounts of growth in this county. And they talked about life on the growth, and they talked about the southern border we build, and how the traffic close we eventually on that. And so Vision Dixie didn't, and vision stopped and broke it off. In fact, it says, "Hey, we're going to have a lot of growth," and it talks a lot about transportation and how we do that, and so we need to work with that thing. But we are, a lot of times when we go out and we see a track that we built, and we go, you know, "There goes the place I used to play." And I can tell you that the same group of cities and some of the other cities have been working hard on one of the key principles of Vision Dixie is building trails. And I can tell you right now, when you go into the cities, the first thing with a new subdivision, the first thing that will pull out is their master plan trails. And those trails are critical to making sure that we have walkable communities and we have communities where kids can private bodies. And so it is being implemented. But if they follow every aspect of Vision Dixie, we will still have a lot more people living down here. Because that's what, that's what the community said that they wanted in Vision Dixie. And you know, I have to admit, in about 10 years, I hope that my three kids go out and buy three homes in this county. And we're going to have three more residential homes in this county. So the best thing that we need to do as county commissioners is to make sure that when the cities are planning these trails and talking about transportation, that we are there and we're driving the cities, make sure that they work together, work with you on these issues. And there's a major that should come up here, it's called the RAP Act, it's going with recreation. And a large portion of that fund will be given to the cities, and the cities can use that to build these trails and to even improve certain trails and any work development they show.
Okay, so next one, we'll start with Mr. Rinstrom, we'll go the other direction. Last part, apparently growth-related questions. For many years, Lake Powell Pipeline has been a significant issue on the Southern Utah horizon. Please explain if you support or oppose the pipeline proposal as you understand it now and why you hold that position.
I have to say, that's the number one question that I've asked. And I think it's a parable question to ask the county commissioners. So as an engineer, I think it's viable that we have another water source in this county. Right now, we are so tied to the Virgin River, and we can have droughts in this county that can easily force people to have to go and turn off their cams. And so we have, it'd be very, very important to have that. As engineers, we always like redundancy, because it is crucial to the quality of life. As an engineer, the only time you will know when I'm doing my job is if I screwed up and made a mistake. And so I am for that. But on the flip side, we still don't know if they have the exact route down, where that lakehead pipeline will go. And when we have that final pipeline, that's when we can hear the true consensus. And when we do the true consensus of the lakehead pipeline, at that point, we need to stand up to the community. We need to get the state involved, we need to get every community to have a discussion about it. And say, "Okay, this is the cost of the pipeline. These, you know, the state of Utah might have contributed so much, and we have to look at all the money and have a very serious discussion." So I guess to round that, right now, I am for the pipeline. I think we should proceed with what we're, with the studies we're doing right now. I think we need to complete those studies and find out how much is going to cost. But right now, we have estimates, we have engineers' estimates. But I can tell you, I've done hundreds of engineers' estimates, and I've never nailed it exactly how much the project's going to be. I try to get close, but that's what we need to happen, especially since we have this discrepancy of where it's going to go. We need to figure that out.
One element that is as much part of Washington County as anything else. It's boy, I can remember my dad was one of the last open ditch water managers in the burgh, kind of. You remember walking those canals that were built along those canyon walls and thinking about those men who built it. And as we look to the future, we need to appreciate, we live in the desert. You need to appreciate that all of your water comes from one drainage system. And the fact of this is, when we talk about average annual rainfall, it's really a mathematical myth. This area is blank with drought, followed by floods. And you add those two numbers together, you come up with an average. The fact of this is, water is the only thing that brings prosperity. And so yes, I am for bringing, not letting the help pipeline, but I'm in favor of bringing the Washington County pipeline. Because we have one more year of drought, folks, it's going to get really painful down here. Conservation is something that we always need to work on. But conservation, what it really does is harden your water supply system. It's stretching, it's not a new, a new source of water. So no matter if we all plant rocks in our front yard, or we flush our toilet once a week, we still wouldn't reserve enough water to protect our quality of life. And so there is cost, but there's a lot of numbers on both sides being thrown out. I said that the cost would be around $900,000 to build this pipeline. But it will bring, it will bring prosperity to the Patriots. Folks, get the facts on this, don't listen to the propaganda that's being put forward there. Because I've lived here my entire life, I think the very water project that allowed me to move through. And so this is something very, very crucial to the future of our county. And so I am as passionately in favor. I know that some people will say, "Hey, you don't help me, I don't help you." I, water is the only thing that makes life possible. And it's our water, and if we don't develop, we'll just send it to California and down the river.
Well, first of all, I wish we could build it for $900,000. I can afford it. It's a little bit different than that. Well, I'll start out with the last things first, because they say that this is going to cost a billion dollars. We had a study done by some professors, and if it were just a billion dollars with interest, which is another billion, over a 50-year period, that would cost us as a county about between 30 and 70 million dollars a year, for up to 50 years. But unfortunately, take a look at this, the original pipeline in Nevada, it's 280 miles long, it's going to cost 50 billion dollars. And it's a comparable pipeline. It's a little bit bigger, and it has some different features, but it's very comparable. So we're not going to build a billion-dollar pipeline here. We're going to end up building about a four or five billion-dollar pipeline. And what does that mean for the community of our size? First of all, it means ruin. And I'm very serious about that, because that means an indebtedness of between 100 and 200 million dollars a year from now until 50 years at least, and up to 90 years. Secondly, we've got to pull out our water grid that you think we do. We have aquifers, and these are terrific aquifers, and they use, we've got 30,000 to 50,000 acre feet of water in the aquifers between what's over by the burgh, what's in Snow Canyon, and what's out in Washington Field. And you can develop between that and 136,000 acre feet that this river, this little river of ours, where it's down, you can absolutely get by with that. Somehow, we've gotten by with it up until now. And I'll tell you what, if you start saying, "Let's break water from the Colorado River," which is now over allocated, and it doesn't work out when we have 800,000 people in here in 2016 with this water, and all of a sudden, that river's no longer viable. Well, do you think the Anna Sazi was a disaster? This will be a bigger one.
Hey, I don't think you have to repeat this one.
Yeah, I don't think so. You probably heard it out. But the question is, for many years, the Lake Powell Pipeline has been a significant issue on the Southern Utah horizon. Please explain if you support or oppose the pipeline proposal as you understand it now and why you hold that position.
Okay, thank you. First, I have to apologize. I just left the soccer practice, I think I've been here half an hour early. And I would fire the guy with the schedule on my phone, except it was me, so I can't be mad at him. I can be mad. So I apologize, that's the first thing, you guys deserve to have me here half an hour early. Second is, the tragedy of the Lake Powell Pipeline is whether we need the water or if we don't need the water. The tragedy is, as Victor said, you need to become educated on it, right? You're not given that opportunity. All the information is protected close to their chest. They don't want to be involved. So my chance to Lake Powell Pipeline is, let's put it up to referendum, let the citizens vote on the Lake Powell Pipeline. Victor O'Malley, did you put it up for referendum? Washington County Water Conservancy District, the non-elected board that's voting on it would have to disseminate information, and we as a public will have. We won't have to listen to Victor and Paul arguing about whether it's going to cost 700,000, 900,000, or 6 billion, because we'll know what it'll cost, because that information will be out there. Two years ago, on the same stage, I argued about it, and he was concerned that the public could never become educated enough to make the correct decision. And I disagree with that. I actually think we have very intelligent community and community. Paul Van Hammon is more about the Lake Powell Pipeline than anyone I know. He has different viewpoints than those who are back to me. So his opinions will never be heard by them, Paul's have their fears. So I think as citizens, we should stand up and say, "Let us vote on it." Do I think the citizens will vote for the Lake Powell Pipeline? I actually do, because as it's been said, we need water. But do I think the proposal will change? Absolutely, because the citizens will demand that we do it the right way. And they'll talk about conservation, and they'll talk about profitable waters, and all that. And we'll have a better project because of our involvement.
Okay, the next question, I'm starting with Mr. Iverson. Work this way, and then we'll go back to the other question. Washington County has been lauded for its addition of jobs over the past year to 18 months. But many of those jobs may have been part-time from our authority to pay scale. What tactics should county commissioners take to help recruit higher-paying jobs for a raised wages in the area?
Well, that's a great question. And that's related to myself and Mr. Rinstrom's act. This is something that we're really passionate about. We need to diversify our economy to bring in more manufacturing. We can do a lot of good things, but with university coming here, we have, we have reached an age to bring in the jobs that will be high-paying, quality jobs in our community, and we need to have that. When I graduated from high school, or entered high school in 1989, I feel like it was, and remembering that era, because it was that year of my generation of kids, it was the first generation here of Washington County that was able to stay here if they wanted to. There was enough jobs here to support us. For years and years, Washington County's biggest export has been its town to view. And so as we look forward into the future, the next 10 to 20 years, it's important that we bring in high-quality jobs. How do we do that? We continue to work together, the cities, the county, our economic belt team, to go out and to recruit and sell this wonderful area. We can offer so much, not only infrastructure for them to come here, the cost of living for their workers, but we also offer a lifestyle and a quality of life that can be maxed anywhere else in the nation. So we're going to continue to bring good, high-quality companies.
So we're going to continue to bring good, high-quality companies, and add value to our economy, and keep diversifying our economy, and move away from just certain sectors that are overbalanced in our economy. And so I want to be very active in selling and asking companies to consider locating here and investing capital. I think we're going to be very successful with it.
Well, diversification is underway. Since the first time I came here, back in the 70s, this was a county. I mean, it was very small, and I don't think there were very many jobs for any diversification. But what I see now are hospitals, I see new businesses, I see a whole range of things, and it's filling in quite nicely. Now, we're not in an industrialized place, because we've got one highway, and we've got one highway, and we've got one highway. And we've got no reroute, we've got no railroad, and we've got no other way for that. And on the one end of the highway, we've got the urgent gorge. So you have to think there are some limitations as far as that goes. But I think, like with Scott Hirsch, who recruits for this area, I think the diversification of jobs is really underway. And I've seen different companies, I've seen big law firms come in here. The firm I used to be with, Jones Walden, they're here now, along with some other big ones. It's really happening, because it's a desirable place, and it will continue to happen. We just won't have that industry, unless something dramatic happens that's quite different. Because, you know, if we ever shut down this one highway, we have, for any period of time, a very big population would be in very much trouble in a very big area.
So this is a big issue, and I think this is probably the number one issue I ran on. Because I can tell you that our economic per se here is in this world, and even though we have a little bit of a downhill in here, but I can tell you, the next 20 years, our economy that we view today will be radically different. And I used a cell phone, 20 years ago, I used my very first cell phone, I think, my first cell phone call, and that was so cool. And 20 years ago, if someone would have explained to me what this device can do now, I would have called a liar. And I can tell you, it's Patrick Turner, I see some of the coolest stuff going out right now. And the economy is going to change, and so we either need to be in front of that wave, or we're going to be behind that wave. And let me explain something. I've got a client right now that I do have with. And they don't go down to the store to buy the parts now, they get on the internet. And this company is making multi-packaged, it's multi-shipped, creative, it's doing the mold injection, the water from Germany. That's how our economy is moving today, and that's how it's going to continue to. And we need to go to these companies and explain to them these things. And Victor and I actually had a discussion. I said, you know, we're both in there, one of the first things I want to do is I want to go to Silicon Valley, because I've actually been there. It's Patrick Turner, I have to live for continued education, and I've talked to the companies down there. And what they always say to me is, they say, oh, you live in Southern Utah, that's the most beautiful place in the world, I would love to live there. I mean, that's a direct quote. So I tell them, bring your company and vote to us, you know, we have these... These are the jobs we want, these are high-paying jobs, vote, I mean, there's really no pollution involved with it. But that's how our economy is going to move. We need leaders that understand that's what's going to happen, because if we don't, we're going to be behind that wave, and other cities are going to pick up on it, and we'll be behind. And so we have to be aggressive. We've done all of that. I mean, when we have Ironman, and the St. George Marathon, we have world-class leaders, and there are holy high stakes coming here. And all I say is, hey, don't you like our mountains? We can say, hey, let us play about business at those offices too. Thanks. So I would disagree that we just say, hey, we like our mountains. So first, Scott Hirsch, is it appropriate for me to have him to raise a hand? I would like to shout Scott Hirsch. Scott Hirsch is a former... Paul mentioned him earlier, I cannot think of anyone who's a better chair leader for bringing industrial parks into Washington County. I, currently, the company is Site Select Plus, I'm going to make sure I say that right. Site Select Plus, formerly known as Washington County Development Council. They do everything they can, I cannot see them doing anything more, and they still have to struggle getting industrial here. Because the reality is, Washington County wasn't built on an industry, right? We need to have a diversified economy, and I would never turn away anything. But I think we need to recognize what our roots are. And there's some people who've been around for a while, like Joe Buck, and he'll have to tell me afterwards if I'm wrong about this. About 30 or 40 years from the group of businessmen got together, and they said, we have a ton of people drive from here on their way to Zion, right? We got a lot of people, we got to figure out a way, instead of Zion being the destination, for St. George to be the destination. And so they put together a plan, and they started looking at golf courses. And they made St. George the destination that you go to and go visit Zion in. I think we've forgotten that. Sometimes we forget the power that we have in those beautiful mountains around us. People come from all over the world, bringing money from outside of our market into it. And I bring that up because I think one of the great things we can do for our development and our economy is to recognize that 2007, over 1,700 community members got together and created a vision, it was a vision of what we want Washington County to be, and it talked about proper infrastructure. And I don't think people from Silicon Valley are going to come here until we actually have a transportation system that can bring them downtown. Those are the things that need to be manned, and I think that's the step in the right direction. The community has already spoken, and it's time to enact what they said. Okay, the next question will start with Mr. Rindman, following the table here. Habitat Conservation Plan in the Redcoast Desert Reserve will expire relatively soon. What strategy should the county commission have to address that issue?
Sorry, tell me again, the Habitat?
The Habitat Conservation Plan, the Redcoast Desert Reserve, that is set to expire relatively soon. What should the county commission do to address that issue? Those of you who are aware of the Vladimir Narasimhan Forest Reserve, that's its nickname.
Right, thank you. It's the most important thing. It's been 10 years ago since the ACP was put together, formally signed. And the BLN gave up 300,000 acres without restrictions and moved tortoises into 60,000-acre habitat in the sub-area on the north side. And they signed documents appropriately, saying that would be the deal. You can develop 300,000 acres without any restrictions regarding the tortoises, and in exchange, a habitat will be there for them. Well, the 10 years, this thing will expire this next year, year after next. And there's a little bit of hunting and pawning going on, because of course, some people always have fire or mores. Would really like to build a house up there in the north side of town. But we have an obligation, not only to stand on our deals that we made. The county commission is certainly one of those that was very much involved in that. But we have an obligation to the critters that we have here who are unfortunate, or who we have control over. And tortoises happen to be a protected species, and that's just something that we live with, and we really don't want to deact it in our whole planet. And this is part of that whole thing, it is important. But more importantly, from my point of view, as a mission, if I should be one, is keeping the word of our commission.
Well, I've worked for Senator Lee, who is a natural resource advisor for the last few years before this, so I'm very familiar with the Danger Species Act. Let me go on to represent that I oppose it as the most abusive piece of legislation ever passed by the federal government. Now, having said that, let's talk about the HCP. HCP is really what I consider the ransom that Washington County had to pay to the Fish and Wildlife Service in order to develop not 300,000 acres, but only 12,000 acres. Of that, many of you from Iowa live in habitat that would not become human habitat had that reserve not been living with it. We, it is true, we are renewing what's called the Section 10 permit in 2016. That is a permit that allows for take, the rest of the county, and take is a word for fish and wildlife communities, that allows for an area where a tortoise lives to be occupied by humans, and that tortoise to be to be preserved. If we don't renew that fish and wildlife, we, there are so many question marks. Part of the problem is this one of the first reserves that's ever created, and so we're coming into new territory. We have private property there, right from Greensprings, that were promised to have exchanged out. That burden was put onto the Department of Interior. What the responsibility of the county commission is to do is to facilitate that to some degree. We've done, the county has filled all of its responsibility regarding the reserve, every part of it. It is the federal government who has not fulfilled their responsibilities. As a county commissioner, it is my responsibility to make sure that I pull you blameless in this, and we don't want to get into a situation of purchasing the private properties. But we need to keep the feet of the federal folks to the fire to get that done. And there's a lot of question marks about this, and we definitely need to renew that Section 10.
Let's go back to the last question. I feel like that hunchback, when he's leaning over like the head. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to go to a ceremony, which they put a stamp on it. At that ceremony, we had Alan Garde there, and he was highly involved in the whole process. Senator, former Senator Buck, which Mike Lee helped oust, so he was there also. And Jim Matheson was able to meet him, however, Jim Matheson was very influential in the past in this. It was regarded as a huge success. It takes an act of Congress to transfer the lands in Utah to the state of Utah. An act of Congress. We can, he and Holly want and say that we're going to sue them and everything, but the reality is, we need to begin to work with the federal government. Did it take too long to the Senate and the year to get to Congress? Yes, it took too long. We need to fix that, we need to make the system better, we need to make sure that we have property. But I will say this, currently, I think it's operating a lot better than Mr. Iverson suggested. I think it was a win. Jim Matheson and Bob Bennett both said that it was a huge win. Bob Bennett was very interesting to talk to, he talked about how the reality is, we took these lands, or this federal government was given and agreed upon through the Mexican-American border, and there's nothing illegal about it. The reality is, the federal government owns those lands, it's called our lands, it's all their own. We want them back. It's time that we start working with the federal government within the system that we have, an amazing constitution, amazing system, and we work through Congress to get back the land that we need, so we can grow. But it doesn't mean that they need to call or talk about how terrible they are. The system's working, it's just not working as quickly as some of us look like. But as long as we work with great people like Jim Matheson and Bob Bennett, Ray O'Pushmore in the future, I think it'll give way for Washington County to be. So it's a difficult habitat, it's probably a place that needs to make infrastructure or whatever you want on the county, people don't understand. And in my opinion, this actually was really a compromise when it was originally set up. And you had the one side that's saying, basically, we do not want to see another house full of Washington County. And Cleveland, some of the homes that you live in today, they did not want that house built. On the other side, I had elders who were saying, private landlords were saying, no, this is my land. I had this 100 years, and I want to subdivide this land, so I can sell these homes for half of my kids' buildings here. And so they came up with this great compromise, saying, don't be, you know, we're going to take certain land, we're going to preserve it, we're going to protect it, and we're going to make sure that we're going to keep the environment in this area conducive to these turtles grow. And in the other areas, we're going to allow people to grow. And if that compromise falls apart, we are going to see our economy here in Washington County crash. We are going to have massive unemployment problems overnight, we're going to have to see people losing their homes, property values will crash probably overnight too. And so there's a lot of issues, so we have to renew that compromise. Now, there's some problems with the compromise. Like one example, this is when they had a fire in that habitat. The fire department went to Taylor to go with the drill staff to fight the fire, and they said, no, you can't go there and fight the fire. Without fire, you'd kill more turtles than any other active man has ever had on that turtle in this county. I mean, that fire, they went through and started to count on shells, because there were so many. I was told that they ended up just stopping counting the shells, because it was just too many, they were like, yeah, we want that a lot here. So we need some, we need that compromise modified, we need to make some changes to that. Some of that is building, you know, right now we have major flooding issues here in the county, and there are regional groups that certain things can be done in the turtle habitat, need to be done in a way that protects it. But when we renew that, this is very, very important for the county commissioners to understand all the aspects to it, the infrastructure aspect to it, and the great compromise to not have that need blown up, and to protect the private properties. Because we have hurt people up there, the whole land, that can't walk on their whole land right now, or be mutated. Thanks. Here, next question will start with Mr. Wright, in the other direction. Some members of the current county commission corps outspokenly supported the taking over national parks during the middle of the recession last year. Crete saw that as disrespecting the law on all supports of wildlife and postrings, and in effect, cut through the locks and the gates. Where do you stand on that issue, should it arise again?
Yeah, so I agree it was postring, I think it was a political game. I think that the county commissioners, actually, I know, I know that the county commissioners I've met understand how important it is for their people on order. They understand that they have a system that works very well, they have a judicial, executive, legislative. If you're disagreement with what's happening, you go through the legislative, don't go do something. And we have, we actually had bad, I think, this local area's got kind of a black eye recently, that some people have been proud of their defiance of our system. Now, do I think that we should blindly follow bad legislation? No, but let's work through this system that works so well. If you disagree with something happening, then we legislate it, we push through legislation, we bring it to, we get our representatives to bring it to the federal government, and we address it. Civil disobedience, I believe, has its place, but we shouldn't applaud inappropriate civil disobedience. I think that we have to name representatives. I disagree with some of the things they do, but however, I support them. And if I have a problem with something, I will go reach out to them and expect them to say something. I had an opportunity to meet with Jim Matheson and Mike Lee, Patrick's a little bit hard to find sometimes, but I think that's appropriate to go. There's just no other way to say it. We need to be grateful for this system. And part of that system is the fact that we as citizens have the ability to be involved, right? We elect people, and we say that we want them to lead us, and then we don't support them, but support them the right way. It's easy to just pull up a sign and say, I hate you. It's another to actually try to fix a problem, and that's what I think should have been done. Thanks.
I agree with that concept, and that was interesting, and I agree with Chris. The best thing that we should do is, we should work with the federal government, specifically with the state government. I thought how the state actually came by, came and passed this, we're going to pay to keep that gate open, because then it can not benefit to our state, I thought that was a good thing. And we need to have those agreements in place before the shutdown or if something like happens, that happens again. But that comes back to a lot of things with Congress. You know, I'm very, can tell you a lot more about Congress than I can, but it's very frustrating, and I'm sure you guys see that. We keep on talking about compromise, so, yeah, we'll just sit down at the table and see if anybody talks, and then we'll all sit along, and then we'll go. Unfortunately, it's not that easy, because if it was that easy, it would have been done. And we stand up as a county and say, hey, listen, this is a very important aspect where, I can tell you that I've hiked all over Science National Park, excellent, days and days in the back end, and I know how beautiful that country is. And I do believe that God is creating this earth, he spent a little bit extra time in Science National Park, it was so beautiful. And I think we do need to protect that, and we need to make sure that happens. And so I don't want, it's fairly clear, there's no question about it, that Science, the Science National Park is a function of the federal government, and that land belongs to the federal government. But I would like to see placements, that if there's ever a money issue in the state of Utah, we can handle that there. And I would like to see better cooperation with the park service and the county, because right now that is lacking. The park service kind of likes saying, hang on, do their own thing, and not talk to the county as much as they should. And we definitely need to open up that conversation door.
Well, the question is kind of based about what we call in the Mike Lee office, the long shutdown, but some people have little terms for it. My point is, when I worked for Senator Mike Lee, I had an opportunity to interact with our federal folks about the...
the federal folks, both the BLM, the park service, and Forest Service. And I'll tell you why I have tremendous respect on the local level, on the state level, for those employees, those federal managers. And as a county commissioner, I find we have very good relationships with our local federal county managers. I'm going to have complaints against my complaints with the East Coast establishment and how they love these, because in all reality, the way we manage public land, our, our local managers understand it. I'm getting to the, to the heart of the question. It really wasn't over because it was an act of cooperation. The state stepped up and said, hey, as long as President Obama is refusing to sign the funding bill that has been passed over and over and over again by the House of Representatives and not taken that by a fair agreement, we will fund you, we'll flow you the money in order to keep these wonderful parks open in our, in our state. And I think what that shows is that the state and local government appreciate these national parks, we're going to continue to support them. What we're going to go against is the regulations that denies access, denies enjoyment with these parks. And so I actually see this as a positive, not as a negative, and I don't know if that was anyone's picture or suggestion and question, but I don't see this as that considered relationship or going in trying to follow the parks during the crisis.
My answer to your question is, the time of crisis was brought on by most of our Utah delegation, the voting action. And the conservative folks in the legislature thought that terrible thing, and they did bid the money in the parks. That I agree with because, you know, there are parts of our economy that are so crucial, but they're so big that we really can't have, can't just fool it with them out of it. But this event over, somebody won't do this, we won't do that. That shutdown of the government includes every number and every business and every function, and it's a last resort, it's a no resort as far as I'm concerned. So my, my view is that these types of tactics should not be implemented. It's just not fair because if President Obama wants to go fighting to get through anybody else and everybody, it seems like the Republican Party wants to fight them, nobody likes it. Well, let them fight, let them argue, ask for politics or come out, but don't spread that hate around to the whole country just because, okay.
I'm going to move to the Henry Martin on seven o'clock, because I got several questions, very similar to one on my hand in the basket, I want to make sure I ask it. I'll start with Mr. Renshaw, and then you guys are hearing well. In the past, the county has not been involved with animal control and shelters. What is your view of the county being involved in such a thing if you are like that?
So I think with that, it's not a matter, if the county's going to have a shelter, it's just a matter of the size and coordination we're going to have with the cities. So right now, the city's predominantly had or mostly had control within the county, and the county hasn't had that. And I think what I've heard from every candidate, that we're operating and doing that. The only question is now is to announce votes. Do the cities want to participate in that, how big do we want it? The other question that's coming up is where, and I think we're all in a hurry, too, even Corey Pulsifer, our sheriff, is for placing that out by purgatory and having prisoners help on that. I think that's an excellent idea on several levels. I think, you know, if you can get a criminal, stopping a criminal is just better for society, and I think interaction with animals is a good way to do that. I know, I grew up with animals, and my life is so much better because I have those animals growing up right now, and I have animals for my children for that same reason. So the question is, is how big do we make it? So that's just my comment. I've already talked to the architect about some of the options we have there, what we can do. I know we, I've actually already now talked to several organizations, like the Southern Home Village Association, to try to help, if you have any of the contributing funds or some of the technical skills to it. And I just think it's a win-win situation. I think we'll take care of our animals in this county, we're going to get, help the prisoners in their lives, hopefully, you know, help them change their lives, and we're going to, and I think it'll be a good opportunity to optimize together.
So I'm excited to say I jumped on this panel actually two years ago, right? Some pretty basic people put together the proposal, or different proposals that Mr. Renshaw just spoke about, and they've been pushing this. Now, it's fallen on deaf ears for like three years. So it been back, the county isn't the same they're going to get behind it now. Hallelujah. I'm not even going to say anything bad about that because if that's the case, I applaud it, it's wonderful. Because truthfully, right now, if you live in Diamond Valley and an animal is attacking your child, you'll call the sheriff's department, right? The sheriff's department will ask you, because I actually use this, they'll say, is it an emergency, honey? If you say yes, and they'll send the sheriff's department first out there, untrained with the animals, and his responsibility will be to kill the dog or alleviate the situation. Does that make sense? So there's a huge problem, a political safety problem. Now, as far as funding, no doubt it's community to get it funded. That's, the county didn't stay for a while that they didn't have funding to build, funding to build it, they do. Then they said, will the member be able to run it? To which currently, we have 20 nonprofit organizations that run our animal control themselves right now. So we'll have no problem finding people to operate. It's just what we need right now is the county to continue to work with it and truly back it. And I'm telling you, this is going to make a huge thing for Washington County. We will be proud of what happens because not only will the inmates grow from it, we'll be taking care of our animals. And I believe, I think Gandhi said, and you can tell a lot about the community by the way that they treat their animals, I think Washington County can show the rest of the world that we care about a lot more than what we're showing right now. So, thanks.
I love this question because this is a question that I think all four of us would agree on, so I appreciate this question. Very large bipartisan question here. The one thing though is, is animal welfare and animal control do not have to be conflict in terms. And the county is putting together those numbers, Corey Pulsifer is leading now on that. We are going to have a shelter built by purgatory, we're going to use prisoners, which can also be a rehabilitation tool. We have been in conversations with San George City as well as other cities that we're going to talk to. We feel like we're going to be able to bring together a team that will not only provide the animal control, which even though our sorbances has said it will provide, we have been to the 15% of the county that's unincorporated, but I think we're going to be able to put together a real win-win here where we can serve as an overhaul for our community shelters and take off some of the pressure for them here to provide prisoners with opportunity to work with animals. I recently read a post from one of my Marco friends that says, teach a child to be kind to an animal like they'll be kind to people. And there's a lot of truth to that, I think. So I'm, I'm really, I'm excited about it. I've been working with Corey Pulsifer and kind of drafting this up. We're going to be going into our budget process, and this is going to be in the budget process for the county commissioner.
Well, first of all, I live in Ireland, we have a wonderful low-kills shelter, and I'm very proud of that that has happened. The problem we had in St. George, which that was unfortunate, but it certainly shows that there is a need for more extensive effort to be made. I've owned four dogs in my life, and I love them all. Do a more rescue than I do animals, and I think Mr. Iverson has a problem. I think if you can love animals and children and be taught to take care of them, care, that extends to people as well. So I will support whatever effort is necessary to put together the effective animal shelter to go through the right time.
Not quite cool, but it's a great, great moment. Okay, well, time now for two-minute wrap-up. We'll start with Mr. White. Is your best elevator seat for a break?
No, it's fine, I can give it another time. I don't want to repeat, but I spent the intro, so. Once again, I would like to apologize. Let me say this, I, I campaigned on three things. One is the animal shelter purgatory, which I want you guys to know that two years ago, the county said it's never going to happen. Sheriff Pulsifer really was pushing it, and they said it's impossible to do, it's just unlikely, and there's no budget for it, it's just not realistic. And I think it's a huge achievement for the citizens of Washington County that stood up and said, no, no, we're just under the rug, we want this. And I applaud those people who fought that fight. The second thing that I talk a lot about is outsourcing of the business to the private sector in the county. I think with the technology that he spoke about earlier, our county can become a little smaller prior sector to take care of a lot of what it was. And then I talk about the Red Friday for Lake Powell Pipeline. All three of these ideas have one thing in common. I believe that it's time for our citizens to become more involved. I believe it's time for all of us to stand up and get excited about this process that we have and truly add to it, no matter who's elected. Are you guys going to forget about the county for another two years till the next election comes around? I hope, all of my ideas require that the citizens of Washington County get involved. I hope when the animal shelter does come through, which you've all heard Victor Iverson say that it's going to happen, Commissioner Iverson say it's going to happen, I hope when it does happen, you stand next to those who are volunteering and helping those animals. I believe, I feel that when the Lake Powell Pipeline meetings come about, you all give your all, because each one of us are part of this community, and this community can enter our own era where we just continue to be, to build a model here in that. But we're going to have to go back to our roots. On the Lake Powell Pipeline is a great story about Washington City residents racing on their horses to get to the boat, whether they were going to do, I can't remember if it was the canal or reservoir. I want us to have that same excitement and that same involvement today.
You know, I kind of, I heard a talk a time, and people are generally motivated by drinking spirit. The second thing is they ought to do things, and the third thing is love. And I want to tell you, you know, I was born and raised here. I spent time here as a child in Santa Clara River, and my wife and I, we had a unique situation where we could pretty much live anywhere we wanted in the world. And when we were living, you know, inside the teenager age, and we sat down and said, okay, we need to establish a place where we can raise our family. And we honestly pulled out of the world, we're like, where do we want to go? I mean, when I say we can go to the world, I actually had a job where I could go to Paris. And we were looking at it, and she looked at me and she said, you know, the place that I love the most in this whole world is the same way like Utah. And I said, yeah, I agree. She's like, so I don't care what it is or what's going to happen with fertile magic apple, we're going to raise our family in Washington County. So I can tell you, I love this county. That is my motivation for running this state. I love the hills, I love the people, I love, I love that they have a dry environment and I don't have to shed the snow. I love everything about it. I guess that's up there to the people to the price. But that is my true motivation, it's, that's it. And so when you go into a vote, you're looking there, and you're saying, okay, what's their true intent? What, what's, what's the endgame? Are they looking for something? And I can tell you, that's my honest opinion. If I get elected, I'm going to take the beach by National Hill, and I'm okay with that because it's so important to me that my kids in 10, 15 years will be around. I really do want to be able to go above my, my daughter and son-in-law someday, I want to be able to spoil my grandkids, and I think the only way that's going to happen is if we take the appropriate steps today. Like Victor was saying earlier, we benefit from the shade of tree that was planted 20 years ago. Well, it's the same thing, I want to plant that seed, that tree for my kids, my grandkids today. Thank you.
I just want all of you to know how much I appreciate this process, how much I appreciate my opponent, and even though you can tell that I'm passionate about what I believe, I, I'm passionate about having this discussion as citizens, that we can come together and talk about what benefits us all. And I want to you to know that as a county commissioner, if I'm fortunate enough to have that on, that that would be the kind of discussion that I continue to lead. I'm passionate about this county. I'm just fortunate enough, God was kind enough to me, to allow me to be born here, and I have five good children, they're a good sixth generation, and I just, I feel with a duty become an obligation. I talked about the canal, so we'll build a walk-in cane wall. I'm serious when I tell you that I'm inspired by our history, but I also feel an obligation to continue to, to be a part of this, this great effort that I'm here to set in Utah. You know, I've worked over the last few years for Senator Lee, which has really allowed me to travel across this state, meeting with federal agencies, meeting with our state agencies and the governor's office at cabin-level positions, and also meeting with a lot of county commissioners. I feel that I'm qualified and prepared to step in. A lot of people asked me about the transition in, in the county commissioner, outside of the issue for details, the special service districts. It's been a very smooth transition because of the preparation I had with Senator Lee. I'm concerned, I, I don't pack away from that at all. I believe in you, and your personal freedom is what makes our community the best. And so I want government to be as light as possible in their lives and get enhanced opportunities for you, a pragmatic individual when it comes to issues here. And more important, I just ask for your vote, ask you to continue to stay engaged. I just thank you so much for being a part of this process.
Well, I'll talk about being elected, and as a Democratic advisor, I would love to take the most under the hood of this vehicle that is called the county government. I'd love to see how it's put together, how it's functioning, I'd like to see how well-trained the people are and how effective they do their jobs. Because I've got a feeling that as far as I can see, there's never been anybody but a Republican that asks a question. And it tends to be an echo chamber when you have everybody worrying about anything. And I think it's going to be a deliberate body, so I could do that bodies to do. Secondly, I'd say if we don't work hard on the growth, what will happen is what happens where communities don't pay attention to growth. That is, the momentum is on the side of the people with the money, and that happens to be the developers, and they're not Metaphor, but they do what they must do to make a living, and they've had a real impact in Salt Lake County because they stepped up with a lot of money and a lot of influence, and they don't like the decision, and it's soon, there's a lot that needs to happen down there to ensure that this doesn't happen here. Finally, this pipeline continues to water. And what I want to tell people is that there is enough water in this basin and in the aquifers, we've got five pretty big reservoirs, and all in all, we've got the ability to develop 136,000 acre feet of water. That's enough money to take, that's enough water to take care of about 600,000, 700,000 people. And if we have that money in our there, I would be glad to help you along. I want to manage my league to make a contribution. I've got the background, I've got the training. What I need are your votes.